Good morning. I would like to welcome you to this call meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Thursday, July 29, 2010. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, I do need to add one additional item, and that's going to be to request approval of a contract with Atlanta Gaslight for construction of a gas line for the Fairview Recreation Center. We'll move that actually to the item six on the agenda, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Subway management.
We have a motion by Mr. Bazler, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The first item on the agenda this morning is to request adoption of the 2010 millage rate. Our presenter is David Curry, our Tax Commissioner. That's handout number one. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. I'm here this morning to submit the 2010 digest and ask for the approval of the resolution for the 2010 millage rate. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Mrs. Staneby, read the records. I mean, all the numbers and everything, or is it just?
No, I don't believe so.
We didn't do it last year.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Holder?
I just like confirmation, and I don't see the attorney here yet, but from the comment that Mr. Roark made about numbers in and what we're actually adopting. I know we're adopting a resolution, but I just want to be sure that the numbers and how it affects each jurisdiction is not required to be read into the record.
Okay. I think that probably, we could probably read those numbers in. I don't see where that would be an issue. Board of Commissioner, millage rate of 11.75 mils. City of McDonough, 8.655 mils. The city of Stockbridge, 11.75 mils. The city of Hampton, 10.35 mils. The city of Locust Grove, 9.803 mils. Any other questions or comments?
I can make a comment, since we don't have much attendance for adopting or setting millage in the meetings. The reason for the difference in various jurisdictions is based on the amount of services that the county provides, and I just want the people who see that there's a difference between McDonough and Hampton, or Locust Grove and McDonough, or Henry County, and any of the incorporated areas, to understand that in many cases, and the reason these millage rates are varied is because of services that the cities themselves provide, and they get a millage rollback for that. So, I think it's important that the people see that and know that it's not a matter of where you live and your taxes are lower, because someone is paying for those services, and in these cases, it's the cities from which they live that's providing that service.
I appreciate you bringing that out, Mr. Holder. That's certainly true. As we know, the city of McDonough, the city of Hampton, and the city of Locust Grove all provide their own police services, so that's a very good point to make.
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Mr. Staneby?
Mr. Bush, with this increase in the millage, is that going to be enough to keep us and going back into reserve? Are we at a break-even point now?
When we adopted our budget back in May, right before June started, it was with the anticipation, we had an estimated cost of what we needed as far as the millage rate went, and that millage rate is still right there at the same figure. So, yes, we should be able to maintain our budget and not dip into our reserve.
I know that we were close with that $400,000 additional fees that we were looking at adding that was going to put us on the positive side, but that fee didn't get approved. Are we still going to be all right now?
We were at about $700,000 to the positive, and that $400,000 left us right at $300,000 to the positive. So, we're still to the positive.
A lot of people probably need to know that we did cut our budget by the tune of over $10 million.
That is correct.
And that budget's very comparable to a 2006 budget, correct, David, if I'm not mistaken?
I believe so.
And we also went, you know, the entire county is taking a four-day furlough.
We cut that budget by nearly $12 million, and still maintained all services, same number of police officers, firefighters on the road. We did not cut services at all, and still were able to manage to, with the help of all 1,700, 1,800 employees taking furlough days, we did manage to bounce the budget this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, I want to mention that that same furlough applies to the Board of Commissioners as well.
Yes, sir. Also, Madam Chair, when you read those numbers out, the 11.75, 8.65, that's the county portion of the taxes. On the second page, the actual millage rate that will be adopted for all the cities and the county are on that second page under number eight. You may want to read those as well.
And the school board.
That's going to include the school board, yes.
Water garden, everything.
Okay, yeah, let's do that. The total ad valorem levies will be 38.628 mils for unincorporated, 38.628 mils for the city of Stockbridge, 38.983 mils, which includes the 3.45 mils for the city millage for the city of McDonough, 39.913 mils for the city of Hampton, and 36.681 mils for the city of Locust Grove. All right, if there's no further questions, Mr. Bazler?
Go ahead, David. The city of Hampton is 36.913. I may have misheard, but I thought you said 39.913, but the city of Hampton is 36.913 mils.
36.913.
And the county portion is only 39 percent of the total millage.
Madam Chair, I do have a comment.
Mr. Bazler?
I know that the school boards pretty well maxed out on their millage rate, and from what I've seen, we're working on a 2005 budget. That was basically what it was in 2005, if my memory serves me right, and what I, the little research that I've done. The thing that really concerns me, I'm not, you know, this whole deal is, I'm not very good at increasing, whatever you want to call it. You can call it millage rate, or you know, some folks would beg the difference on a tax increase or whatever. One thing we've got to keep in mind is when Mr. Bush said, we've got 1,700 to 1,800 employees here that skipped their jobs. Our level of services has stayed. I, for one, have strived and fought for a precinct in the 5th District that is manned, and it's seemed to be very effective there. And at the end of the day, you know, hindsight's 20/20. We look back and we see some things maybe we should have done different now, but I feel like that we've, you know, in the last, in the last three years, three and a half years that I've been on this board, we rolled it back one time. And, but the level of service, our firefighters are still up and running. We've just, you know, it was, it come up to be maybe, maybe 10 furlough days or eight furlough days. We missed that. We got away from that. We was talking about possibly a 5 percent reduction in their pay. We got out of that. We didn't, you know, we missed that. And, you know, this comes to us today, and the level of service that we have, you know, we can't jeopardize something happening to the fire and the police department, and especially our public services in that. But, you know, I've had calls on this, and folks, there is some folks that's kind of aggravated, but at the end of the day, the employers of this county didn't take a cut in pay. They have four furlough days, which we all took, this board as well. And that is some of the things that you have to keep in mind, and then to think that we're still running on a 2005 budget when the increase of, the population has increased, the size of the county continues to increase. So, that's just some of the comments that I had. This thing has weighed hard on me, but at the end of the day, you know, we can't jeopardize public safety in no way. And I think that's something that I've had, I've struggled with big time, and especially when you're talking about employees taking a 5 percent cut and eight to 10 furlough days, and we didn't have to do that, and thanks to Mike Bush and the staff here, we've all worked, and spent a lot of endless hours on the budget. But, that's all the comments that I had. I think we need to keep in mind, you know, where we're at, and hopefully where we'll be headed in the next several years.
Mr. Staneby?
I have one other comment. David, you can verify this. Mike might be able to help me too, but if I'm not mistaken, David, countywide, we've lost close to $1 billion of property value, haven't we?
That is correct.
And your levy, based upon a smaller value throughout the entire county, that's why the small increase is probably needed, correct?
That's correct. While the millage rate will, if you approve this, increase to 11.75, you're actually about a 10 percent decrease of the amount of revenue from last year.
And the new tax--
If you have some figures, what does to a $100,000 home or $200,000 home, there is a amount of pocket, the amount of money coming out of the pocket of taxpayer does increase. However, however, it is very minimal. The Tax Assessor's Office sent out 81,000 reassessment notices last year. Values across the county went down on average, I think, 15 percent. Their taxes will be lower than last year, significantly lower than they were last year. As I said again, this 11.75 is a decrease in the amount of revenue the county will receive from last year.
Let me kind of hit down on that a bit. You said, actually, with the reassessments of all the homes, basically, not the commercial, but the homes, has went down 15. I've heard as much as 15, in some cases, more than that, up to 40 percent in some cases. I don't know if that figures--
Well, that's true. On average, 15 percent. I had a, I had a conversation with a lady that lives on Willow Lane. Her home was valued at around $80,000, and her reassessment came in. She lost about 60 percent of her value, but on average, we're talking 15 percent.
That's right. And on the reassessments, David, we basically reflect in what's gone on in our market for the last three years, correct?
Absolutely.
Without the adjustment, we wouldn't be able to pay our bills another year using our money in reserve, which also affects our bond rating throughout this entire county that we borrow money from.
Sure.
And you also have to keep in mind, looking toward the future as well, that Henry County has what's known as the floating homestead exemption. So, those reassessed values at the lower levels today, for everyone who has homestead exemption for county tax purposes, when their values go up, they're still paying county taxes at this level.
At a lower value.
That will not increase until that house is purchased by someone else, so--
To the Vegas backup.
And even though sometimes the tax, the tax bills are very confusing. I wish there was some way that we could change that and make that a much more simplified system, because it's taken me several years to really get a grasp on how that's done. But even when property owners see their reassessment every year, and their values have gone up for county tax purposes, they've still continued to pay the same tax to Henry County Board of Commissioners that they did at that initial value, but that's some, it's not really reflected on the tax bill in a clear way that they can see. So, it can, it can be very confusing. So, it's going to be going forward. Not having the ability to recapture the increase in those values will certainly impact our budget in years to come. So, hopefully, we can attract some more business in here.
Hopefully so.
That's what we need at the end of the day, is some more businesses to come in here. Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you adopting the millage rate for this year, and I'll entertain a motion.
Do you approve?
Motion by Mr. Staneby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to request approval of the revised project framework agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Our presenter is Sherri Hopson-Mathews, Planning and Zoning Director, Rocky Romero, SPOSS Transportation Director, and Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director. Handout number two. Good morning.
Good morning.
This looks really serious, and all three of you are up there.
I know, for all three of us to come up here. I guess I'll do the simple part. As you all probably are aware, this is another amendment to a project framework agreement that has been brought to you all on four different occasions. My understanding is that this project is being revised again because the actual construction cost has now been determined. I just want to give a quick little background on the project framework agreements and kind of let you all know what we're trying to do internally with GDOT on the PFAs that typically come to the county. If you all are aware, you typically will receive an attachment aid that shows the preliminary engineering right-of-way in construction. What that form doesn't tell you is that those right-of-way costs and the construction costs are typically just estimates. So, the only thing that they're really asking us to agree on is the preliminary engineering, but they go ahead and list all those costs at the beginning. So, that's kind of why we're back here today to revise the PFA. I'll defer to Rocky and Terry to kind of give some history on why the costs actually went up, but this is just a revision, and thank you so much for allowing us to put it on the agenda, because it is my understanding the project has already been let. So, we do need to get this PFA executed.
You want me to do it?
Yeah.
We received a letter from Bob Rogers at Georgia DOT informing us that the low bid, including construction engineering, is $2,574,049.21. So, that's an increase of about roughly $574,000 from what the original project estimate was. The 2009, the 2009 PFA had originally, if y'all remember, had the federal, the federal part, which was originally set up as an 80/20. If the whole project cost was about $2 million. The federal's portion was $1,601,600, and the county's portion originally was $400,400. With that actual bid coming in at $2,574,049.21, additional monies would be needed to advance that project on. So, in addition, we might, just so the board's completely informed, the other thing in this new PFA includes that Henry County will still be responsible for the utility relocation of anything that is, where the county would have to reimburse, reimbursable utilities. So, and I think Rocky's got an estimate from Georgia DOT?
Correct. It's roughly about, it's roughly about $200,000 for the utilities. We've got to relocate water lines, power lines, so those are going to be reimbursable.
And just for point of clarification, on the executive summary where it says that the increase went from $400,400 to the $972,449, that is for construction only. It does not include the utilities that Rocky just mentioned.
Because the PFA does not include the cost estimate of the utilities. It only includes the cost of construction, and then it just mentions utilities 100 percent Henry County reimbursable.
We purchased the line.
Georgia DOT.
GDOT did.
Do we have the additional funds in SPOSS 2?
Yes, that's going to be the next resolution. If this is approved, then the next, next resolution is to, to a budget amendment that would include the $572,000 additional monies that we need for construction, plus the $200,000 for utilities.
Mr. Holder, have you gotten your accounting of the expenditures of the SPOSS proceeds, district by district, that you requested a couple of months ago? Are you still interested in having a copy of that?
I would. I would definitely like to have that. Absolutely.
All right.
Are you ready?
Go ahead, Mr. Holder.
If I'm reading this correctly, we're talking about about $1.2 million. Is that correct, when you figure the $972 plus $200,000 estimate? About $1.2?
Correct. Grand total will be $1,172,449.
Okay, say one point for round numbers.
For round numbers, $1.2. Out of those, we already have allocated $400,400.
So, you're still, you're still looking at about--
$772,000.
Eight hundred thousand more dollars.
We had, I mean, nothing's changed on the utilities. We were originally assigned to do the utility relocation, so the utilities hasn't changed. I think nothing new that was on the old PFA, and certainly on the new PFA, so that hasn't changed.
Correct me again if I'm wrong, but the way I'm reading this, Henry County's putting $1.2 million into it, and GDOT through federal money and Georgia money is putting how much into it?
In construction, they're putting $1.6 million. And in addition, I don't, you know, of course, they bought the right-of-way, and they spent a lot of money on the right-of-way, if you're aware. They have the corner right there. It says, Sheriff, Sherri, does it say on the new, back of the new PFA, what they spent on?
I don't know if you can see that.
The right-of-way total was $1,934, and then they paid for all of the preliminary engineering through federal and state funding.
So, $1.9 plus--
The $526,666 was for preliminary engineering.
Okay, so two and a half million, and then the construction is how much did they pay involved? So, over $4 million that they're putting into that intersection that's coming from, from the federal highway money or Georgia DOT money, is that correct?
Federal and state.
Federal and state, so about $4 million, and Henry County's is going to be $1.2.
Yes, sir. And it looks like they're matching the federal portion under the preliminary engineering and the right-of-way.
True.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you approving the project framework agreement, and I will entertain a motion.
Do you approve of that, dear?
Have a motion by Mr. Bazler?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you. The next item goes along with this is to request approval of a budget amendment to cover increased construction and utility relocation and related costs for the revised project framework agreement. That's going to be handout number three.
Like I mentioned before, we do have $400,400 on the account on this SPOSS 2 project. We need an additional $772,109 with 99 cents, and we do have the funds on the SPOSS 2 unallocated funds.
Any questions or comments pertaining to this item?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder?
In unallocated, Mr. Romero, those funds had to be cost savings from various projects throughout SPOSS 2. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Again, this makes even more important, the comment that the chairman made earlier about an accounting of where these funds were, where the cost savings were, and where the funds are being spent. I would definitely, I definitely want to see that. Please, please get us a copy.
I'm going to give you an update on what he's talking about. Again, our budget process, we had, we had said that the DOT resurfacing of 30 miles of roads this year would be handled through SPOSS 2. What we did is we went in and looked at District 4, where this Millers Mill Road project is, and we took $772,000 of that road resurfacing and put into this Millers Mill, where we already had the $400,000. And then what Commissioner Bowman did is he's going to resurface his $772,000 worth of roads out of his SPOSS 3 resurfacing money. So, it did not touch any of the, basically, it was a wash, is he had to do one out of SPOSS 2 and one out of SPOSS 3. So, the money that was earmarked for District 1 resurfacing, which is out of that unallocated money, I'm actually having a resolution ready to present to the board, probably the second meeting in September, which has the account of the closing of SPOSS 1, the cleanup and the strengthening up, so we can actually have a budget in SPOSS 2 for all this resurfacing projects that we're going to do, and also a accountability of what's going on in SPOSS 3. So, you will have the most updated version of SPOSS 1, the closing of SPOSS 1, what's left in SPOSS 2, and SPOSS 3, the second meeting in September.
Okay, that's, that's great. And it also will tell us a true accounting of where the projects, the savings were, of where it was spent. How many dollars have been spent in each district?
Yes, sir.
In each district?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution, and I will entertain a motion.
Do you approve?
Motion by Mr. Staneby?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you. And the final item, well, actually, we have two items. The next item is going to be request approval of a contract with AGL for construction of the gas line for the Fairview Rec Center. Our presenter is Mr. Mike Bush.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board.
Good morning.
And with the construction of the new Fairview Rec Center, we have an inch and a half line that runs approximately 700 feet from where Atlanta Gaslight's line is right now to this building, and they have requested a resolution at zero cost to the county. They will, they will put in an inch and a quarter line to operate this facility, and since it's a brand-new facility, they've asked for this resolution to be adopted, so they can come on our property and put this gas line in.
Any questions or comments? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with AGL.
So--
Motion by Mr. Bazler?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries four zero.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Holder.
Of course, obviously, I haven't read this agreement. But how will this affect, I know Atlanta Gaslight's going, they will certainly provide the infrastructure, but is our contract for the provider currently through Atlanta Gaslight or Georgia Natural Gas, or is it one of the other marketers? And the reason I'm questioning is, if they're going to extend this line at no cost, are we tied in with any agreement for, for the usage of, in the future?
This resolution requires at least a 15-year, you know, to maintain this gas line for 15 years for that facility, which that should not be any issue whatsoever, because that facility will be there for much, much longer than that. I do not believe that our gas provider, we don't get gas bills from Atlanta Gaslight, it's from, I think, Georgia Natural Gas, I believe is the provider that we have, and we have a set term rate--
Exactly.
--with them.
If it's Georgia Natural Gas, that's Atlanta Gaslight's, their own provider.
Right.
But if it was Scanner, or Gas South, or someone else as a provider, I just wondered if we were locked in, if we did, and the term rate went up, this all of a sudden, no-cost deal might not be so non-costly.
We actually just reset that contract with Georgia Natural Gas, and it dropped, I want to think, eight more cent, to, I think it's like 58 cent a term that we pay. We did have, we also went to a county-wide, any county building, to make sure we were all on the same gas bill. We had, at one point, we had, you know, $1.29 a term, $80 a term, and we talked to them about, you know, we as a county, we have, all these bills come to one place, you're getting a check from one place, and they worked out a contract with us, and we pay like 58 cent a term right now. We also took that same 58 cent a term and even pulled in the library, since they're a component unit of the county, and we got them from $1.39 a term to 58 cent a term, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is an appointment to the Board of Assessors. It has been brought to my attention that one of the appointments made at the last meeting has declined that position, and that would be Mr. Leland Maddox, and so we're back before this board today to consider another appointment to that position.
Okay, if I might. Mr. Maddox visited with me earlier in the week and asked that his name be removed for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Assessor, oh, excuse me, yeah, Board of Assessors. And certainly, you know, I can understand, and he, he used various reasons that he would like to have his name removed. And with that, you know, I certainly respect that request and will remove it, and with that, if you want a nomination, I will certainly be glad to make a nomination, and that being Leah Fricki, who has just recently, has been on the board with us. There's not a training period that will be required for her. She will certainly pick up and go right on, so.
Well, we have a motion by Mr. Holder to appoint Leah Fricki to that position. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, the motion's about time.
Three.
I'm sorry. You're exactly right. For a three-year term.
Can we have a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark.
I have a question first. Has anybody contacted her and said she wants to serve?
Absolutely. She is willing to serve.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not all in favor of the motion? Motion carries four zero. Mr. County Manager, any comments for public session?
No, ma'am.
Miss County Attorney?
None, other than I apologize for coming into the meeting late. I was on a conference
I was on a conference call with Sheriff McBrayer, taking care of an important matter, so wanted to explain to the board and to the public why I was absent for that brief period. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other business to come before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bazler, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. We stand adjourned.